Good morning, Dottie. Oh. Can't hear it. Yeah, crank it up. I'll look at that.
It's going. I can read it from here.
In thirty seconds.
Can you see the other side?
What?
Can you see it on?
I can see it.
Yeah, I didn't know it was the other side.
Yeah, it's all working. Mm-hmm.
All right. We are on the clock, and so I will call this meeting to order. As the Calhoun County Commissioners, the date is June 6, 2022. Good morning, Dottie.
Good morning.
Morning, Tony.
Hey, our... The first order of business, I would like for you to meet Lindsay Carthol, the new HR Administrative Assistant. And so Lindsay, I'm going to have you stand up, and why don't you guys go around the dais and introduce yourselves?
Hi, Lindsay, I'm Todd Sanderson. I'm one of the Commissioners Northeast District. Nice to meet you. Yeah?
Watson, I represent the Southeast District.
Bill Hartman, East District.
And that is not Susan Sleeper.
West District.
I'm Carla Weinreiner, First Deputy. Yeah, so Lindsay, why don't you explain a little bit about your background?
Hi, my name is Lindsay Carthol, and I graduated from Purdue University, Fort Wayne, in 2018 with a degree in organizational leadership and concentration in human resource management. Since 2018, I've... I have a variety of jobs. I worked in banking at Three Rivers. I worked as a logistics admin specialist at Buchanan. I also have a little mortgage background. I was training to become a mortgage loan officer at Ruff. My end goal was really human resources because of my degree, and I spent a lot of money to get that degree. So that's why I'm here today, is to really challenge myself, grow, and learn more. And I'm stepping outside of my comfort zone, really, with the first job in county government, but I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Okay, the biggest thing that we need to discuss this morning is the health plan and the premiums that you guys decide what we're going to share with the employees and what the county is going to pay. Susan and I worked on a variety of scenarios. We sent those to you. The one scenario is without spreading that the $49,000 credit that Anthem is giving the county to bring the renewal down to an effective 9.9% increase. So we have... We have two scenarios. We have either without spreading that $49,000 over all of the employees or with spreading it out. And so I have all of the premiums per pay. We sent that to you in an email. And so met with Rex and a representative from the HILB group who now owns insurance trustees, and they are waiting for those numbers so that they can put that... Plunk those numbers into the benefit summary and then get the things printed. We're hoping that they will be able to get that printed very quickly. That's the last little bit of information. Everything else, they were going to start on... We met them, I met them on Thursday. And then we can get everything out to all of our employees and schedule some time in probably the white room of the annex to encourage employees to come in if they have any questions. Rex will be down there doing those meetings, trying to schedule something with the Highway Department. Those guys are pretty easy. They're kind of a captive audience. Ben usually, you know, holds them, and they have a big meeting, and we can go over things with them then. So anyway, that... Those numbers, that's what I really need to know today so that we can get rolling on that. So I didn't bring extra copies. I'm hoping that you guys had that, you know, in your email.
Hey, Todd and Mike, on this... We split it 50/50, or we absorb all of it, or...
I think we should split it 50/50, but give them the credit of the $49,000 spread over. In other words, if we get the credit of 49, I think we ought to allow the employees to share in that also. And like I said, next year, if we start a little early, I think we can get better grasp of the benefits of another program, but for this year, I think we should share in the cost, and... But I think we should give them the benefit of the $49,000. If we get it, it's a net savings to us, it should be a net savings to them.
Sure. Good evening, Mike.
Well, I wish we had more time to come up with something a little more creative, really, because if we're going to take a hard look at things next year, you know, it would be really helpful if we had a building block for a healthier workforce beginning now. I just don't see where we... If we have to get something rolling today, I just don't see where we have time to do that, which is a shame. So I'm, you know, I'm good with the split, I think.
I think it's...
We haven't adjusted the employee share for the previous three years.
Right.
It's reasonable to catch up with this.
And we can maybe explain that's part of the incentive package to better health is, you know, you'll pay part of this increase. The way to decrease it is to eat healthier, live healthier, exercise, whatever. So I'll entertain a motion, Todd.
Let me make a motion that we spread the cost 50/50 with employee, giving them the 40... With the $49,000 figured in as a cost reduction to both parties. One second.
Very motion, and a second. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Excellent. Okay, well, I will get back to Rex when we get back over to the office. The other big thing, of course, we're always hiring. The Sheriff's Department, I think they have about... I talked to Jared Ulrich the other day. He said that they're down probably seven officers still. So we'll need, you know, we always have our line in the water. We're still trying to think creatively for recruiting purposes there. Doing fairly well with the residential facilitators out at Community Corrections. We're making some inroads there. I do believe that they have a new Director of the Residential Services person. I will let them, after all is said and done, they had to do background check, drug screen, things like that. So, and they have a, hopefully, they're waiting on background checks and drug screens, a case manager, part-time residential facilitator. I think they're set on field officers, so I think that's good. Full-time residential facilitator also. So, yeah, things are moving right along. Michelle's feeling very confident about the staff, so that's a good thing. Central Communications will have a new dispatcher coming on board. I think she starts next Monday, the 13th, and so she has EMT, EMS background, and so they're hoping that her training goes quickly. There will be some pods of her training that she will probably ace because of the background in emergency communications, so that'll be great. I do believe the Extension Office has been doing some Zoom phone interviews with candidates for their other full-time position that they have in their office, so that's, you know, moseying along. Still haven't had any responses on the Surveyor's First Deputy. I, last week, you know, you start feeling, okay, you're getting very frustrated, nobody's responding, so you start thinking creatively, you know, creatively. And when we had... We had a position open a couple of years ago with GIS, and so I actually still had those resumes for everybody and emailed everyone, "Do you happen to know anyone who might be interested?" GIS, you know, geographical, the people who have those sorts of degrees, you know, it's... They may know somebody. They've been in a class. You know, we've already gone the route of all the colleges in the, you know, in the area and outside of the area that have any sort of professional engineer, you know, civil engineering and also surveying. So getting back to those people, you know, it's like what recruiters use, you know, they call the people that they have in their file, "Hey, do you happen to know somebody?" You know somebody who knows somebody. So, you know, you keep trying to reach out, trying to use your network, but still haven't had any response on that First Deputy, so that's disappointing.
Now, Mike, Mike had some comments Thursday about that, and he's... The colleges, they're screaming when they come out of college, these guys are scooped up.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's exactly, yeah.
And quite a bit more money than what you can pay, or what we've been paying.
Yep. And about the last meeting I had with Mike about three weeks, four weeks ago, we touched on possibly asking if that position, not filling a First Deputy position, but creating the same duties, all the same responsibilities, but not making it a First Deputy, so that the pay is not, you know, constrained by that 80% rate. He hasn't gotten back to me about that, so...
That'd be more like an assistant.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly. And, you know, I kind of changed the posting a little bit, more of a assistant survey or thinking, you know. Well, I don't know, we'll see. So, yeah, I tell people, it's like knocking my head up against a brick wall, and you guys have all been in my office, and I've got four brick walls, so, yeah.
Are damaged.
What?
They're all damaged.
Yes, they are. Yes, I've been doing so much. Yeah, yeah, yeah. By the way, our Crackerjack, Larry Lane, the Maintenance Department, we had a little issue two weeks ago with a swarm of honeybees at our building. Oh, that was fun. They were coming in HR's offices. We do have, well, now, the dead ones are all out of the light boxes. We had them all over the place. I went over to the Extension Office with a couple of dead ones, because they were just kind of onesie-twosie initially, and said to Alicia, "Are these honeybees?" And so she gets out her entomology book, you know, we're flipping through there, and she said, "Hey, I've got some bee guys, and we'll, you know, we'll get somebody in." So she got a bee guy to come in, and along with Larry, and they ask us to get the heck out of Dodge for a while. They took one of the ceiling tiles down to see where they were coming in. They were up on the roof. I could see them from, you know, my windows, looking down at the bees. The bee guy ended up, he didn't find the queen. They kind of, by the end of the day, and even the next day, the bees were gone, just as quickly, you know, as they came. The queen must have gotten a bee upper bonnet, whatever, as they say, and vzzt, and off they went because, because we didn't have any bees. And so Larry took a look around the other day. So, and I tell you, Mary Ann, who cleans the building and has for years, she said, "That's the first time that's ever happened." It's like, ah, I don't know what happened either, but in and out. But, you know, once again, two thumbs up, they took care of things for us. Larry was actually out at Home Depot when we contacted him, and he said, "Well, I'll just pick up some, you know, spray stuff." I was like, "I think they're honeybees. We probably don't want to go..." unless, you know, we really had to. And we ended up not, you know. So, anyway, so there was that. Let's see, so, you know, so we're just, you know, hiring... The jail still has a couple cook positions and had a couple resumes come through over the weekend that might be good, passed those on to the matron out there. So the person who had been on work comp out at Sunny Meadows after long discussions with the labor attorney, because it had been since September, this person had been off work, had exhausted all of our leaves, had exhausted just everything, is terminated from employment with us. But because he's on work comp, he will continue to have contact with them, with IPEP. IPEP will keep us informed, but this leaves Sunny Meadows open to finally replace that position. They've really worn themselves ragged trying to cover those weekend hours between the matron out there and the director and anyone else who was, you know, willing to overtime. I can't even imagine the overtime that they've incurred. So hopefully, they will be able to recruit that weekend housekeeper. So the other thing that I really had on my agenda is the idea that you guys have bantered about with the eight-hour workday and did some research with other counties and cities. Also, as I mentioned, I think it's really, you know, important to have some buy-in or at least, you know, some comments from some of our department heads. I sent you that email on Thursday, what I had discovered, what a lot of the department heads had mentioned personally for HR, you know, from the beginning, we've always been "Only a 35-hour work week?", questions, you know, because we're often putting in, you know, the assistant position generally puts in 35 hours, but every once in a while, you know, we'll have to put in a bit more, or else we flex, because things don't always happen between 8:30 and 4:30, Monday through Friday. So sometimes we have weekend things, and sometimes, you know, hey, we have employees who work 24/7. HR sometimes has to be available, so, you know, it usually falls on me, but, you know. So anyway, that, those are the comments that I had, the, you know, what we could anticipate with wages increasing. The, as I mentioned, you know, it would probably be about 60 employees that we would be talking about, if we take out the departments that are currently working the 40 hours. And there were, you know, I mentioned the Surveyor's Office. I don't know, I'm hoping that they are more productive with working 40 hours, maybe because they're coming in earlier, they're able to get out in the field and work with the contractors and the property owners earlier. So anyway, what else do you guys need from me on this topic?
I kind of was intrigued by the 410, four days, 10 hours.
Oh, heck, yeah.
And the only reason to being for the employee, too. Here's why. You work 35 hours, five days a week, you still need childcare if you have kids. So you're paying for childcare either way. If you work 410s, that gives you a full day to go out, do your doctoring, take your kids to the doctor, groceries, whatever. It gives you a full day to get out and do those things that are only open during the day, and it also, on the flip side, gives us better customer service for the people that need to see us, because we could, you know...
Yeah, and, you know, for every department, you know, they have half their staff working on Monday, half their staff working on Friday, they've got everybody working Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or whatever, you know, maybe somebody decided they wanted to do a Wednesday, have a weekend within a week, you know, sort of thing. But that was evidently, that seems to be working for that particular county, that, you know, they're sort of flexing some things.
I like that schedule, just from a standpoint, again, a lot of places are only open during the week, and if you need to schedule a doctor appointment or, you know, what it might, or if you want a long weekend person.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's a, I think it's an incentive, there's an incentive that costs us nothing, gets us more production, and helps the employee also, just, and maybe it won't work, but I think it's worth looking into.
And for years, the Highway Department has worked 410s during the summer, and they have Friday off, and of course, if anything happens on a Friday, well, then, you know, Ben gets the call, and the call, the call person gets the call, and, you know, hopefully there's nothing so drastic that you've got to call in, you know, everybody to work on a Friday. But, so they, you know, I think that must work pretty well, because they've been doing it for several years, and I haven't heard, haven't heard any issues.
I think courthouse, county employees, it has to be year-round, same schedule. We couldn't flex like they do because of the confusion, what's the hours, because the hour is going to change. With them, it doesn't really matter, because they're not serving the customer there.
I mean, it'd be nice if, you know, and you could incorporate like a half-hour paid lunch, or say, no, take an hour off, and, because some of them want that hour, that's something that can be discussed, too, unpaid. But that way, you could offer services as late as 6 o'clock in the courthouse, which would be nice. You know, someone needs to file that mortgage exemption, someone needs to look up, you know, whatever it might be.
Or start at 7.
Yeah, or start at 7.
Right, on their way to work, or those third shifters, they're getting off work, and I want to take care of it before I go to bed, you know.
I think that should be some discussion, maybe, looking at a 410.
Yeah, I'm certainly open to some creative thoughts and discussions.
I hadn't really thought about the 410, but who knows?
Smaller than a 20-gauge.
Is this something we should reach out to the employees for, like, do a survey?
Well, I think that would be a good idea, because Dottie's absolutely right, if we don't get the buy-in, it's just not going to work.
Mm-hmm. Give them those options, either, and I'm thinking, five, eight-hour days with the lunch, with an hour lunch, or the 410-hour days with, I don't know, hour lunch or half-hour lunch, probably half-hour lunch.
I would think that Jack would be able to do a Survey Monkey or a doodle poll or something that would allow for some anonymity to the answers and still get, you know, kind of an honest response.
Any poll, though, you need to make sure the question's written correctly. You know what I'm saying? Can you digress the questions? That's one thing on polls I hate. Take this poll about your customer service, and you read it, and it's like, that's not the question I want you me to ask. But, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, these are pretty specific, specific questions, but I think if we want to elicit some candid comments, if we can do it anonymously, it'd be better.
I'd like that idea.
Yep. I'll bridge the subject with Jack.
Okay.
So find out, yeah. And, you know, we're looking at two different things. We're looking at our employees and what works, and then also the, our customers, you know, our patrons in the county, and what works for them, you know. I don't know, you guys get, are the ones who get the calls from, you know, your constituents who are, you know, irritated, they can't get in because of, you know, fill in the blank, whatever, the hours or, you know, something, so...
I think it's important to remember, our customers are forced to be our customers, in other words.
They are.
So we have to facilitate them some, a lot of, you know, the joke is, oh, government, you know, they kind of...
I know.
And that's not true. The government works hard, but we do have to give them an ability to, you know, transact business with us, effectively for them.
Yeah.
You have to be available when your customers need you.
Right, yes, exactly.
Quick question, did I read in a memo of yours that our turnover rate is 6%, but the county at the corporate level was 15 or 16?
It kind of varies, you know, like, per month, it's like about 6%, kind of overall, about, you know, that 15 to 20%, depending on what has happened. So it's not that bad, really, overall. You know, we've had the mass exodus from, you know, a certain department, and that really messed. But if you use, and see, that's the thing, I used 350 employees, and keep in mind, those would be board members, those wacky, that we have to count some election workers as employees, and they're not necessarily, you know, we could cut it down to just full-time employees, but the way that, you know, and we have to, because the State Board of Accounts says that we have to count those people as employees. So sometimes it's a little, a little wacky, and that's why I'm thinking it's really lower, because when you guys have to reappoint somebody to a board, that's a termination, you know? Yeah. Anyway, lots to, yeah, lots to think about on that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Doug, you got anything for Dottie?
Oh, one quick question. Did Lauren give you a reason for her departure?
Who?
Lauren.
Oh, yes. Well, a few months ago, she moved to southwest Fort Wayne, and so driving up here, she found a job a little closer to home.
She told you that, that was because of the drive?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you going to get...
That's one thing, polls, I hate, take this poll about your customer service, and you read it, and it's like, that's not the question I want you me to ask. But, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, these are pretty specific.
Yeah.
Specific questions, but I think if we, if we want to elicit some candid comments, if we can do it anonymously, it'd be better.
I'd like that idea.
Yep. I'll bridge the subject with Jack.
Okay.
So, find out, yeah. And, you know, we're looking at two different things. We're looking at our employees, and what works, and then also, the, our customers, you know, our patrons in the county, and what works for them, you know. I don't know, you guys get, are the ones who get the calls from, you know, your constituents who are, you know, irritated, they, they can't get in because of, you know, fill-in-the-blank, whatever, the, the hours, or, you know, something, so.
Okay.
I think it's important to remember, our customers are forced to be our customers, in other words.
They are.
So, we have to facilitate them some, a lot of, you know, the joke is, oh, government, you know, they kind of.
I know.
And, and that's not true, the government works hard, but, but we do have to give them an ability to, you know, trans, you know, transact business with us, effectively for them.
Yeah.
You have to be available when your customers need you.
Yeah.
Right, yes, exactly.
Quick question, did I read in a memo of yours that our turnover rate is 6%, but the county at, at the corporate level was 15 or 16?
It, it kind of varies, you know, like, per month, it, it's like about 6%, kind of overall, about, you know, that 15 to 20%, depending on what has happened. So it's not that bad, really, overall. You know, we've had the mass exodus from, you know, a certain department, and that really messed. But if you use, and see, that's the thing, I used 350 employees, and keep in mind, those would be board members, those wacky, that we have, we have to count some election workers as employees, and they're not necessarily, you know, we could cut it down to just full-time employees, but the way that, you know, and we have to, because the state board of accounts says that we have to count those people as employees. So sometimes, it's a little, a little wacky, and that's why I'm thinking it's really lower. Because when you guys have to reappoint somebody to a board, that's, that's a termination, you know? Yeah. Anyway, lots to, yeah, lots to think about on, on that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do you, Todd, you got anything for Dottie?
Oh, one quick question. What, did Lauren give you a reason for her departure?
Who?
Lauren.
Oh, yes, well, a few months ago, she moved to southwest Fort Wayne, and so, driving up here, she found a job a little closer to home.
She told you that, that was because of the drive?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you going to get that writing from her, or anything, or do you, do you guys do exit interviews?
We do exit interviews that are, I think they're pretty good, actually, and so, yeah, that's, and where she's going, she's going to be an HR generalist, and do, you know, same sort of variety of things, and the possibility of eventually being the director of HR is maybe a little, little better than, than here, right now, for her there. So, it's a nursing home and corporation, and so, the, the person who is currently in the HR manager's position has been up, you know, promoted, 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 and that person is probably going to be promoted again fairly soon, so she thinks that she's got a good chance.
Okay. Mike, anything for Dottie?
Nope.
Nope.
I got nothing.
All right, well, thank you so much. You guys know where we live.
All righty. Good luck with the new employee.
Yeah.
Good luck, Nancy.
Dottie. You'll have to sign this for you. Let me.
Motion for second for president to sign, we need a motion.
You said, you know, you had to sign that? Well, eventually, yes.
Oh, no, okay, okay. All righty. I promised, we got a little time here before the next one, I promised Tony a little, I give him a few minutes, so if you want to come on up, Tony, and we'll squeeze you in here and get you back out the door.
Well, I don't have a formal presentation, we just had some, some recent phone conversations about the DeKalb County Highway Garage Project, and how important it is to ensure that local contractors have the ability to bid that, those projects, and, of course, as you know, we're headed down the path of a design, bid, build, delivery approach, which is as old as time is, in terms of delivering new, new buildings, where the architect designs, and then the general contractor bids, and the general contractor will utilize subcontractors to help fill in his bid, and then we open a, a unified bid on bid day, which local contractors would have the ability to bid that way. But if you really want to ensure that bid packages are structured in a way, the local contractors certainly had the best, the fairest shot at winning that work. There is a construction management, delivery approach, which I know we've talked about at length on numerous occasions, so I suggested maybe we revisit that, and, as a way to make sure that the local contractors have the fairest shot at winning the work. And I just offered to be here, in case any, you had questions about that.
Todd, Mike?
Well, I am always a big advocate of doing business locally, whenever we have the opportunity, but given the scope of this project just keeps going north, 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 I'm not sure that what it's going to cost us to hire a CMA, just to make sure that we tailor this for local subs to, to bid, is, is, is cost-effective, I guess.
Tony, you, you made a comment about the, that position of that person, that, that cost is probably going to be included in the, if you, if we hire a contractor.
Yeah, so if you hire a, a general contractor, just like we're headed down, that general contractor, in his bid, is going to have costs to manage the project as well. So, conceptually, or ideally, the, 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 the construction manager will have that cost, but no contractor will have that cost, so, you know, from, from a big-picture point of view, Mike, the, the idea is, is it's, it's not going to cost the county any more or any less to go this route, because you're still going to pay, you're still paying somebody to manage the construction project, regardless of which delivery method you use.
I thought, I didn't think the difference is, the one would be upfront, pay upfront, or a good part of it.
Yeah, because you're, you're going to, well, they'll, you, you'll know that service, the cost of that service upfront, because that would be disclosed in a proposal process.
The fact that we're pretty well through this design phase, would that reduce the responsibility of construction manager?
It, it would, because ideally, you get the construction manager involved as soon as you can, so they can be at the, at the table through design. Now, since we're, we are so far along in the design process, in my mind, there's less work for them to do, so, in my mind, there's less pre-construction services for them to do, but the same amount through, through the construction process.
Okay. I haven't really any other questions, in my mind, I think I know which way I want to go. I mean, we have, did we rescind that build, design, build, and construct, or design manager?
Did we rescind it?
Yes, did we? I don't think so.
Well, we had, I mean, we didn't finalize that.
No, we didn't finalize it.
We just had a discussion about that being the, the way to go.
What, what do you think it'd cost to hire a CMA on the scope of project? What's a?
A CMA, so a CM, oh, as agent?
Yeah. That's what it'd be, it'd be a 132, right?
Yeah, it would be, you know what, I, I don't know, I think the pre-construction services would probably be in 10 to $15,000 range, but to do the construction, through the construction, it's probably, I, I don't even want to guess, because I'd be, I, I'd be wrong.
Six figures or five?
I think it's six.
Yeah, normally, it's a, I bet it's 250,000 at least.
Yeah.
As a percent, it's going to, it's going to be a percentage of the, of the bid.
A lot to me. You know?
It is a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my point, exactly.
Yeah, it's a lot of money, I, I don't know, I'm just wondering, too, if this, you know, there's a good chance that we're going to see some bids that are going to make our head spin, and maybe the.
This thing's going to hit 10 million dollars.
Well, maybe the thing to do right now is to concentrate on renovating the main building, see how that goes, break that out separately as a job, hire someone to do that, and then, let's see what the bids come in on that, and that'll give us a good idea where we're going to be on the rest of the project. I'm not afraid to say no to all these bids coming in. And, you know, if it gets out of control, we just can't afford it, we can't afford it, it's just the way it is. We might have to pause it, but I think a good, it's just my idea, or just a thought, and I'm open to suggestion, but we know pretty much what we want to do to the existing building. I'd love to see that chunked out, and let's see what we spend on that, and see if we're close to our estimate, and that'd give us a good guidance on the rest of the project. And also, it'd lessen the, you wouldn't need a CMA probably as much, you know, probably have a contractor build those other projects. We can knock them off one by one if we have to. So, nothing ever said that you have to eat this whole elephant at once.
Mm-hmm.
Something to think about.
I think that's, that's certainly an option to consider.
Because it scares me a little, 10 million isn't in my doing, it isn't happening at 10 million.
Well, we're, we're 7.9 in the estimates, we've already got a million in the property.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm talking the renovation.
Well, but that'd be, that's still an 8.9 million dollar contract.
Oh, yeah, I know, but 10, 10 is a heart attack level for me.
And there's, and there's no soft costs, and there's, and there's a lot of things that are missing from that bid, you know, wherever, from a total project standpoint, we're overbid at 10 million dollars.
And maybe it's 12 million, that's why I'm saying we need to.
Could easily be.
I think we need to look at renovating the main building first, and see how well we do at that.
How does that work, Tony? I mean, you've expressed that that probably couldn't be done, and have a, a design, bid, and build contractor?
We, well, we, we could, but we'd have to switch gears from the design standpoint, we'd need to, we would want to, I, I would think, finish the civil design for the entire property, right? And then, but the drawings that the architects and engineers finish would just be focused on that one project, and we bid that out, and that would just be one project, the site work for, for the whole thing, and that building. And then, when, when, depending on how that comes in, or if you want to, you know, do that project and wait for, for the others, then we would just do those other buildings as you're ready to do them.
But we could actually sort them out, set up, separate them out, and we actually wouldn't have a general contractor at that point?
Well, if you went CM, construction manager, you wouldn't have a general contractor, because that, that CM is going to serve as a general contractor for you. And really, breaking these out into separate projects would be, it'd be advantageous to use a construction manager.
Would it?
For that. Well, if, if you're going to do it all at the same time.
Yeah, at the same time, I was talking, let's concentrate on the main building, see how that comes out budget-wise, and then if we like it, I think we could, we would need a CMA then on the rest of the project, we say, okay, we know kind of what to expect, at least. The, the good thing is, I'm hearing, my brother-in-law works at Nucor, they're actually getting cancellations on buildings right now. We might get lucky here in a year or two.
Because of long lead times.
Yeah, well, no, they're, the costs, the escalations, they've just said no, and it helps when Elon Musk goes on there and talks about laying people off, too, and, but it, so we might get lucky, we, we might be better off, we don't have to purchase a new building with the current building, we just need to renovate it, so there's no.
Right.
So it, give us at least a shot, knowing if we can get the workers, if we can do something on schedule, if, you know, a good test run, I think, on the main building, but we'll see. I mean, talk about, I, I don't mean to make your job any harder by any means, but, you know.
It's, it's okay, I mean, we, we want to, we want to deliver this project, you know, the best way we can for you, and if, if that's the path that you want to go, I mean, we can, we can set up, like, the, the big truck storage building as an alternate, as one big alternate on bid day.
Yeah.
You, you can pick and choose what you're comfortable with, what you're not comfortable with.
Well, if you want to look at all the options, I, you know, we can take a, a hard look at build, operate, transfer, because we can't buy it off 10 million dollar cash junk, I mean, we just can't, right now. But a build, operate, transfer, I ran numbers on the 8 million dollar project without the land, cash flow's out at just over 700,000 a year, and I think I'm high on some of the variables. So, we've got three years of that in the bank, right now, and if we just took them small amount of the ARPA funds for the extra, with cash flow for another three years, that's six years, that gives us an opportunity to work with the councils and save some money, set aside, to be able to grab one of the off-ramps at eight years, maybe, 10 years tops, grab one of the off-ramps and own the thing. You know, it's easy, it's, it's very possible to set aside that kind of money if you plan for it ahead of time.
16th, we open the RFPs.
I'm sorry?
16th, we're still scheduled.
Well, they, so.
We haven't requested the RFPs yet, have we?
No, we haven't, so, so what I did in that, I think that email you're referencing is, if the board chose to go as a construction manager, as agent, an expedited schedule on how we could onboard that construction manager, and that is, I, I think the schedule would be aligned to, I think the 20th is a, is a, is a meeting, that you would be able to.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we, we target the 20th, which is two weeks, and that's moving fast to onboard that, but it's, it's much easier to onboard a construction manager as agent than it is a construction manager at risk, so, yeah.
You have to get those out real quick, if you want to get them out by the 20th.
If, if the board still chose to go that direction, we try to get that out today.
So we need that today, we need that decision basis.
Well, and if you do a, if you do a, go ahead.
The only decision we're making is whether to ask for solicitor RFPs.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have to accept any of them, we don't have to do anything, once we get them, except open them and decide whether that fits our process or not. So, we, we got nothing to lose.
Can we request a fee along with those RFPs?
Yeah, we can, we can request their proposal. I would think that we would, the, the right order is to, to get their proposal, review it, and then if you want to speak with each proposal provider, then, then we could schedule those conversations or interviews, you know, really as quickly as you guys wanted to do it.
Okay, I think that'd be the way to go, then. Okay? So, yeah, get, get those out, Tony, and.
Okay.
We'll meet then on the 16th?
Yeah, can you get them back that fast?
Well.
That's only 10 days to get them out and returned.
They was, they was talking, are you want to move it back?
Yeah, yeah.
Would that work?
We want to move faster, so that'd be, that'd be exactly what we'd want to do, is try to get it back to 16th, give you time to evaluate, but if you're going to make a selection on the 20th, you're going to want to be through that interview phase, if there is one, and I don't see how getting them back on the 16th, let me check my calendar, because that's.
That's 10 days from today.
16th, yeah, so, so we're spanning a weekend there.
Put on speaker.
It's really that following week, on, the, the week of the 20th is probably when you'd schedule interviews, if you wanted to interview.
Now, Susan. Just barely. That's what I thought. Right. Yeah, yeah, we're going to go ahead with that. We need to. Yeah. Okay, thank you, Susan, appreciate it. Bye-bye. That was Susan. We did accept the design, bid, and build, I thought we had.
Yeah, we actually accepted, it doesn't mean we can't change.
So we need to rescind it, if we're going to change.
Okay, rescind is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you said rescind, I'm like, where are we rescinding it?
We have to rescind it, we can do that today, or we can do that on the 16th. Because we've got a special meeting, she's advertised for the 16th, so that's all set, 2 o'clock. We can go through the RFPs, and, and then, I wonder, we can rescind it then, as far as the design, bid, and build.
If we go with a CMA, and we have to pay him upfront, or a lot of it upfront, what if we end up not building this thing for two more years? I mean, you know, we're paying him, do we pay him again then?
Mm-mm.
So it's, her service is in the future?
Yeah, it'd be.
Well, you're, you're, you're going to, you'll, you'll pay the pre-construction services, right? So you'll get the service, you'll, you'll get your service for that money, okay? And then, and then when you open bids, you're not going to pay that construction manager a dime until you actually break ground and decide to move forward with the project, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That, that makes me feel a little better.
Okay. All right, we're up against the clock, if there's anything else, any questions for Tony?
Are there any, because construction manager as agent is a service, a professional service, this isn't a low-bid situation, and you can select the firms that you want to, want to select, did, do you have any that you'd like me to specifically invite?
Well, I think, didn't Futter's express some interest in it?
I'd like to see Wiegand.
Wiegand.
And, and on that.
Well, I think didn't Fetters, uh, express some interest in it?
Mm-hmm. I'd like to see Wiegand.
Wiegand.
And, and on that, uh...
Lauren Burnell worth a call? Or in the mix, at least, maybe he's not interested, too, might not be a big enough deal for him.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see Wiegand also.
Okay.
And Fetters, probably.
Okay.
You know Frank Albright?
I'm sorry?
You know Frank Albright? I can't remember the name of his firm now.
I don't know that name.
I've got his card on my desk, I'll send you...
Okay.
His, his information, might as well, might as well.
Who, who's he with?
I can't remember the name of his company, but he's, they've been, he's been around forever.
Okay, so at the, at this point, it'll be Wiegand, it'll be Fetters, um, it'll be Lauren Burnell, and possibly the fourth, Mike, you'll send me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you that.
Everybody else that you might recommend, it pops into mind, it would be...
No, I, I actually, you named all the people that I would, there's, um, um, Michael and Kinder and Sons could, could do this project very well.
Yeah, I heard about that, I forgot that.
Yeah, um, Hagerman is, has an excellent reputation, um, I don't know if this is a big enough project that they, they would be interested in, but, but I can reach out to him if you, if you'd like.
And there may be some not available.
Pardon?
Maybe some of them not available.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we might, we, we might invite five, and get three, so...
Okay, thanks, Tony.
All right, well, thanks for working me so quickly, I appreciate it.
Have a good one.
You, too.
Okay, back to our regular schedule, Mary, you are up. What you got for us today?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, there you go.
We improvised, okay? Okay, for... Those of you who don't know me, my name is Mary Simcox, and I'm actually serve on the town board of St. Joe, and I've lived in St. Joe for 20-plus years. I wanted to share with you this morning, um, an experience, uh, that I had attending the Noble County, DeKalb County, um, Railroad Incident Planning Workshop in Kendallville, um, and I wanted to share how excited, the excitement that I experienced, and what triggered that excitement was this brochure, okay? I've given you a copy of it, and I'll explain it, um, and we'll go through it a little bit later on, um, the, I need to settle down here, get rid of my arms, and put my glasses on, so I can stay, okay? Actually, um, I've pre-given you a copy also of the National Preparedness Goals for Mitigation Response and Recovery Strategies for incidents, uh, any major type of incidents, but, uh, actually, because of the rail system between Noble County and DeKalb County, this focus in the workshop was on the rail, uh, incidents. Uh, if you look at the National Preparedness Goal, the number one goal is for public information and warning, that's, that's why this brochure excited me, to get that information out. Uh, and my concern, it was almost like somebody heard my, my concerns for my community. We have trains, they are now, um, more tr- more traffic, there's more weight, there's speed, we see more of the tanker cars coming through, so it is a major, major concern. So I was excited because the reach-out is far greater than my community, it's our county. I was, um, so, if you look at the brochure, I gave you the Kendallville one, the inside shows you the different, the trains, rails that go through, the pink part of it is the required half-mile radius, that if there is an incident, those folks have to be evacuated. What they, uh, this brochure helps with is, it's individual to the community, 'cause I have others for, and, and that's what they, this, um, presentation shows is, and these brochures are, um, to each individual community, it will show that town, that city, and where it lies in that, um, radius. So, this brochure was developed, the center is the map, shows folks where are, where are you located in the radius, on the back is a go icon, if there is a major rail incident, and if it, um, is with a hazardous, uh, waste or unknown, there's a time limit in when these folks need to be evacuated. So this is educating the folks what they need to take, what they need to have ready in case that incident occurs, so it helps with that. And then, the next part of it is the rail hazards, material incident, and it gives, and it explains immediately to evacuate, press it. So it's my understanding, um, going to this workshop, that this information, the brochures were, um, given out to the different communities in a number of ways, uh, the most efficient, which, um, Mick Newton felt, was giving it to the fifth and sixth graders, and the kids taking them home to the parents. They were also handed out by, uh, volunteer groups, your fire departments, um, health departments, any, any agency that would be involved and touch an incident like this. Also, if an individual, it was in a rural area, the brochure was nailed, so that they had the information at hand. So, again, I explained the different communities, community, had a brochure.
Mary, can you stay at the microphone, please? We're recording you.
Thank you. This is ligninier, so you can see how different and how individualized the brochure was to this community, okay? Then again, this is actually Kendallville or Nobville's, uh, map, where the two, they have two lines going through, and the, uh, evacuation areas are indicated on that. So I, like I said, I just wanted you gentlemen to know what's out there, know what Jason Meeks and his team are working on, and Jason actually facilitated the workshop, which was, uh, excellent, really. So, that being said, and some information before you, um, again, I thank you for your time, I also wanna thank Jason for all that he does, and support him in every way that I can, and the information was provided by, um, Mick Newton, and he's actually retired, uh, Director of Noble, Noble County Emergency Management Agency. I did require, I did inquire about costs, um, but the, um, Mick had, uh, applied for a grant, and Grant paid for the cost of the, or some of the cost on the brochures, but I wanted to bring that up, too, because we do have, um, funding in the county, that if a community needs to reach out, or I was thinking of their, uh, Loet funding for safety could be used in this particular case, so, any questions?
I have a quick one, the half-mile radius, I'm looking at the Kendallville chart, why does the, the trunk line rail that runs south into the industrial park, why doesn't that have a half-mile radius, too?
Unless, unless it's, is, if it runs, or is it, um, I didn't ask that, but unless it's not a ongoing, maybe it's just a siding?
A what, I'm sorry?
A siding, a railroad siding?
Yeah, it probably is, I mean, it's a, a railroad, it's obviously to deliver that industrial park, but they're gonna be taking industrial chemicals or whatever, I mean, when the chance of a spill, or you're just thinking mostly derailings being the biggest problem. Yeah, I'm just thinking, I, I'm just wondering.
I think basically that goes down to craft.
Does it go to craft?
I think...
Oh, yeah, and there, there's a siding, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the foundry's not out there anymore.
Yeah.
I think it's mostly just craft, so, sugar water probably...
So there's sugar and water?
Probably, it's too contagious.
All right, no problem, I'm just curious.
I can follow up on that.
Caramel flavor.
I had to ask a question.
Oh, yeah, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, Jason?
Okay.
Just gonna, just quickly, just, very bringing it up, we did do this in DeKalb County also.
Oh, okay.
So there's a DeKalb County map, um, we also have...
Thank you.
So we also have these same boards, um, in our DOC, at the central communications, we have four-by-four boards, four feet by four feet boards, that's, so if we have an incident in Butler, Butler map, actually have four-by-four, but, so, to go along with what Mary's, is proposing, what she's cited about, is for DeKalb County, we didn't take it to the level that it, as far as educational, uh, with the brochure, um, this would be something that we could work on, um, we've already got the maps done, um, we've already got the jurisdictions done, app, we just need to take the other information that's on the other side of that brochure, basically, there's other ways that we could get it out, through website, uh, social media, things like that, with, with the way that I'm... So...
No, that was, my big thing was the education, I just think it's so important, folks, the number one thing is, no, you have to leave immediately if it's a hazardous waste, because, yeah, that's just, I mean, I didn't know, like, wow, oh, that's, folks, with the, the different freight that's coming across our line.
And hydrous ammonia's not good for the lungs, right?
Well, this was, was a great workshop, uh, great way to spend the morning, and, and I appreciate all the effort you put into it, Jason, uh, really informative, but I, I think communication with constituents is, is really, uh, important, and public safety is, is right at the top of the list of, of our jobs, so I would certainly support, uh, getting this information put together and out to the public in whatever way we can, and I've gotta think there are some grants available that would cover the, the, the printing cost and, and distribution, I think, would not be, uh, or dissemination of, of the information wouldn't be that complicated or costly, so I, I would certainly support looking into whatever, uh, avenues we can do, and, and Mary's still as excited as she was that morning, so, I thought it was just the donuts. Yeah.
Do we have the ability, as a county, to harvest our constituents' cellphones, or to ask them to give us, and do an information campaign, like through Homeland Security, to be able to send a text to someone saying, hey, did you know you live in a, or do you live in a railway evacuation area, click here, you know, from the county, should, should we have some sort of, sort of information exchange available to direct text people? I mean, have people sign up for that ability?
We, we can do that in case of an emergency, isn't it? I mean, we can, we can push a text.
The Sheriff's Department has a system for the state's IPOS.
Yeah.
Or even just...
And the school staff do that, too.
Do you have the database to do that along these corridors? Would that be something we'd, we'd need to do? In other words, you'd have to contact them first, or they'd be the main ones to contact? The ones beyond that, would you contact, or would you contact everybody in the county? Okay.
Making people aware first, and then having that, and then...
I assume we need a motion to proceed?
I would certainly make that motion to, uh, uh, proceed with, uh, coming up with a, with a program and looking at the grant opportunities and...
And second?
And motion and second, and additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same, motion carries, carry on. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mary, thank you, Jason and Gabe.
Thank you, have a good day.
It was a great program.
You never know.
Yeah.
Soon as you think, well, that won't happen here, it'll happen, boom, it does. Okay. Claire, Mary, you are up.
Good morning.
Grab something.
Well, now.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Um, I think I submitted a letter, and the point is, uh, and I think we've probably had some informal discussions, uh, individually, about Lonnie getting a take-home car. If, if you look at the history of the office and the way the investigator position runs, it actually is more traditional to have a car than to not have a car, but for, jeez, 20 years or so, Deb Workman was the investigator, and Deb didn't want one, so back when cellphones were new, she went to Lonnie, my predecessor, and said, look, I don't like having a take-home car, uh, she did not have a law enforcement background, although she did go to the academy in order to be an investigator, and she functioned in our office more as an office manager and paralegal than as a, uh, more typical law enforcement officer. And she, she went to him and said, look, I'd like a cellphone, which then were the new-fangled thing, instead of a take-home car, and she turned it in. Greg Kenner before her had a take-home car, um, she had the take-home car for a number of years, gave it up and got the cellphone. Well, Lonnie Lanning comes out of law enforcement background, he worked at the Garrett, um, Police Department back, jeez, I think he transferred over to Auburn about the time I started practicing as a prosecutor in 1990, but anyway, he, his background was both Garrett and then Auburn PD until he retired out of Auburn, and of course, he also worked for Community Corrections in a, sort of a hybrid position, I guess, not technically law enforcement, but doing a lot of things that we would associate with law enforcement tasks. His, um, job classification for wages and everything else is a little bit messy, um, they've tried to call him a detective, he's not exactly detective, I don't let him, uh, be the detective originating cases in pretty much anything, because that's what police departments do, but he dovetails with them, and if you will, is kind of the, uh, the liaison to bring things in. He goes to the scene, sometimes he needs, he has occasionally, uh, been there early enough in hot enough situation where he wanted to put on his lights, but he didn't have any, because he's in his private vehicle, uh, he goes to the different police departments around the county, um, you know, myself and my deputies very occasionally go to the scene, it happens, this last thing from a month ago, um, several of us were out there. Lonnie, of course, was out there, but Lonnie, I was out there for 45 minutes, he was out there for four hours, and because they know his law enforcement background, they put him to use as a law enforcement officer, he carries, that I believe is one of the requirements of a take-home car in DeKalb County, is that you're, um, able to carry, he carries, it's a statutory thing, uh, he should carry, in fact, um, part of his liaison work with the police is he does firearms training for the Auburn PD at the range, so, um, I think everybody in the courthouse, while he's not officially part of security... officially part of security, security knows he's there and uses him when they want to, which involved, we had somebody bring in some marijuana a few weeks back, and security called him about putting the case together. So he came out and sort of cleaned up how we put a case together. So he is very hands-on. He is my right-hand person. Obviously, I have a chief deputy, but we're very siloed. My chief deputy and successor does legal work. And I believe he's planning on counting on Lonnie in much the same fashion I do. Um, he's my all-around handy guy, uh, because I am the head of law enforcement of DeKalb County. He's my liaison. So is he a direct supervisor of police departments? No. But he is the gatekeeper on a service that they need, which makes him effective, excuse me, effectively, um, part of their command structure, um, somebody they need to talk to about getting cases filed with us and what we want. So he's, he's the handy person that falls in between all of the job classifications of what we need. And one of the tools he needs to do his job more effectively is a take-home car. If you look at our records, one thing you'll notice is we only turn in mileage for going to training in Indianapolis, pretty much, or training for someplace else in the state. In reality, by statute, we're supposed to be turning in mileage on all sorts of things. We go over to Butler once a month, but, yeah, twice a month. Um, and a staff person usually goes, too. They never turn in mileage. Lonnie has never turned in mileage. He should have been turning mileage in the entire time he's worked there, but he just doesn't, nor do I, because it's not worth the hassle. Well, it probably is worth the hassle, but it dribbles by you, it dribbles by you in a fashion where you don't pay attention to it. Um, him having a take-home car is the fair and reasonable thing to do for a really excellent employee.
Questions?
And you were hoping to get a, a police car from the police?
Yeah, the sheriff has told me he's got some cars. He regularly decommissions. Um, so he, in fact, I think he even has one or two of them right now that would work great. Spoke with him Friday. He's like, yep, that's still the deal. Um, he'd offered it up quite a while ago, um, one of the cars, because obviously Lonnie's not working the road generally. He doesn't need speed, uh, performance, set of patrol offs. But he does need one with lights, uh, and it can get there, and, uh, he's really the county. So we looked into expenses a little bit. Since the car would be yours, um, I would assume you'd take care of the insurance and licenses. But I have pre-trial diversion funds. In fact, I've already drafted a letter, which if you approve me getting a car, Susan will submit to council to use funds out of my diversion fund, take care of gas and maintenance. I assume if it's being decommissioned, there may be some extra expenses this year. Um, if it's a marked car, we'll have to make it and get rid of the, the seal. If it's not a marked car, that's easier, but it may need some new tires tuned up because it's been on the road for a while. And then, of course, gas.
Uh, question, and maybe I missed it, because I'm having a little trouble hearing all of this. Uh, would that, would the police department be credited, traded in value for that car?
I don't know exactly how that works. My understanding is that all cars belong to you, and it, I don't know that it would be that big a deal. It's one of, one hand of yours to the other hand of yours.
It'd just be a transfer of asset. I mean, the asset would be part of the DeKalb County Police, and, I mean, their use of the asset, and it'd just be different use of the asset. But yeah, if they traded it in, you would obviously lose that trade in credit, but we still have the asset also. So, I mean, it's, we're just, it's just we're not trading in that asset for...
I mean, but my question is, how does that affect the police department's budget?
Oh.
I mean, he's, he's got a budget.
Yeah, the sheriff's department budget.
He counts, he counts on trade-ins. So how does that work on his end?
I'm not sure he thought through that, because he's been more than willing to give us a vehicle. In fact, he kind of, and Lonnie's the liaison of law enforcement. So, uh, Lonnie spurred him to say, come on, try it, do it, need to do it. So I know he's all in favor of it, but what it means in dollars and cents for the police department budget, I can't say. Obviously, they have no ongoing expense, but whether they get some sort of a credit for their...
I guess more Susan.
We can find out.
Susan, Carla question.
And it's, depending on the vehicle, it's a $3,000 to $8,000 vehicle if the police have been through it.
And the main thing is to get cleared through the audit.
Yes, exactly.
Does it create an audit issue?
Yeah, right.
That's the main thing I was thinking about.
I guess I, I would ask that you let that accounting thing go. I'm, I'm good at paying for the gas and the maintenance, which we think is going to run. Uh, what do we, submitted a letter. The letter was for this year only, um, so it's about six months' worth. I know next year it will cost more, but, you know, it's going to cost us $5,000 a year, probably in gas and maintenance.
Go to 10 bucks a gallon, right?
Yeah.
Pretty happened.
I don't have a problem with this from a standpoint, if you think it helps the efficiency of the, and be the prosecutor, it'd be the prosecutor's office that benefits from this, right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
Susan said council will need to fund the full amount of the car, the sheriff budgets to replace cars each budget.
It's credit. Okay, motion?
Make the motion that we allow prosecutor's office to secure a car, a decommissioned car from the sheriff's office.
Hey, motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Got your car.
Thank you.
Don't wreck it the first day now.
You do turn the lights on, so everyone knows you're there. There's an accident. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to payroll.
Okay.
I will just approve payroll.
Second.
Motion and second to approve payroll. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Motion carries.
And keep up.
Doing great.
There you go, Mike. Claims. Yeah, this one. Yeah, we signed this. It's payroll.
Payroll, here's some payroll, here's some claims. All signed.
Okay.
But to, uh, motion to claims?
Make a motion, we pay the claims?
Second.
Hey, motion and a second to approve claims. I did have a question. There's a, benefits paid back to county, $40,839. Is what, do you know what that is by chance?
What is it?
Benefits paid back to the county by the Community Corrections.
Oh.
Well, that's part of the grant.
Would you front that money?
Susan's texting me. She's listening. She's calling.
Oh, okay.
Hello?
Hello. Those are the benefits. Those are the benefits.
I have you on speaker.
Okay, I got it, I got it. Understand. Right, got it.
Aye, we have feedback.
Yeah, we pay approximately $65,000, they pay the rest. So we pay the lump up front, or we absorb it up front, and then they pay us back out of grant money. I, got it, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye on claims? Aye, opposed the same. Motion carries. Travel.
Travel, okay.
Skip the minutes.
Hmm?
You skipped minutes.
I did, didn't I?
Oh, minutes, here's minutes.
Well, let's go ahead and do travel.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
While we're at it, I got a, I'm confused by David Chirp's travel.
I didn't read them, to be honest. I couldn't get that one to open for some reason. Hey, I'll get them, Susan.
Well, it lists one person, but it looks like it's for two people.
We'll find it.
Because everything's about doubled. And the mill, the mill allowance does not add up to the $32 apiece.
You think it's for one person then, or two?
He's only listed one, but it, the room rate looks like it's for two, the mills looks like it's for two. I don't know about the registration. Anybody got any? Well, I mean... This was, I printed up at home.
Oh, you printed it up?
Yeah.
Let me bring that out.
Let's see the... Got it? Yeah, I just...
Did I? Thank you.
It's four ni, it's four nights. The room rate, if you divide by one person, four nights, it's $258 a night.
You said this is the Nashville trip. It's all more expensive, going to Nashville, evidently.
Sheridan Grand Hotel.
Yeah, it is $258 a night. It's 2:07 plus, uh, miscellaneous fees. So the total...
That is a Nashville.
That's a government and military rate. It's 10:3227 for the four days. I got the motel bill in front of me here.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
And, yeah, it's $8.95 a person for the registration fee.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there it is. I see it now, too.
Part of the Nashville party this year.
Yep, Nashville party. Okay, motion for travel?
I'm moved to approve travel.
Motion second to approve travel. Additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, aye. Ridiculous. Just for the record, minutes?
60 in an hour. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve minutes and additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Motion carries. Okay, Council Commissioner meeting topics. That'll be next Tuesday. I've got down the highway, highway, high wire, highway, uh, and the eight-hour workday, 40-hour work week, and now we can include the 10-hour, four-day work week, I guess. Any other subjects?
Covers it for me, but...
You guys keep going back and forth.
Any other topics for council?
Not off the top of my head.
And of course, that'll be present to him with the money amounts for the highway. And I've asked Ben to attend also. Conversation. Does he have any questions for him? Okay. Henry knows bringing up whatever else. Henry knows bringing up whatever else comes to mind the day of.
Yeah, I can't think of anything.
Okay. Alrighty, well, okay, let's go on to the corrections light and dishwasher. We've got, and we can kind of include that with mosaic final payment, I suppose. The lights were not supposed to be. Did you get a chance?
No, I didn't. I had those manuals at one time, and Mike, I don't know if you're filled in on this, these, we're having some of these, those heavy lights that were falling through the ceiling, they're failing, uh, failing internally, not working.
Oh, okay.
And supposedly, they can't be covered in insulation, but I have never seen a commercial light like that that can't be covered in insulation. Most of them are IC rated, so I, but, but someone told you, though, Bill, that they weren't IC rated, to be covered, right?
No, no, no told me that. And I don't know if he's read that out of the manual or...
Okay.
Or what.
Let me find, I have that manual somewhere in my phone, and I'm going to work on that during the break to try to get it and read it, because if they covered them with insulation and they can't be, and they're burning up because they're overheating, I get, now we got a problem again. But if not, they might just be a junk light that is no good, too, you know?
Junk light's a good possibility.
Yeah, because I, I can't imagine, the reason why you'd about have to cover them lights, that'd be a huge loss of heating and cooling.
Oh, yeah.
With 30 of them lights, four foot long by two foot wide.
Pretty much everything is required to have insulation.
Yeah, I just, like, I think it's called IC rating. Something like that. I might, might be the wrong term, but, let, let me look that up while we're, we're talking about that.
The other situation out there is the dishwasher. And Michelle's supposed to get us some solid numbers on that. What's happened with that dishwasher? It's failing to come up to heat again. We had priced, put any booster on that, and that's going to involve running another circuit. So it involves an electrician and the booster and the plumber. And the rounded-off figure at one point was $7,000 to do that. Now, we got a junk dishwasher. According to the serviceman, who worked on it here a week or two ago, it's the lowest, cheapest dishwasher you can find. Parts are hard to get. Uh, service is hard to, they're hard, not easy to service or get somebody that can service them.
Right.
And so we're looking at the possibility of a new dishwasher. Can buy a new dishwasher, a high temperature for about the same money as the booster, $7,000. There's an option of a low temperature with a rinse sanitizer injection that sells for around $4,000. So I've asked her to bring us those solid numbers and, and we can then decide which way to go on that. Why, we might as well buy a new dishwasher.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's just going to keep breaking, it's just going to keep adding problems, and why put a booster on it? When, you know, for the same money, basically have a brand-new dishwasher. It's out of warranty, we're going to swallow it.
Well, the thing's built in Spain with Chinese parts. I mean, you can't have a worse scenario than that. It's like asking the English to cook and the French to be the police, you know? It just doesn't work, so...
So in addition to that, and, and piggytail off that is a mosaic vinyl payment. We do a lot of that payment. What did Tony say about that? I should ask. Oh, I see some kind of reply.
I asked the...
Yeah. I guess the question is, do we pay them, or do we, I don't know if we got standing to hold it. But the lights are failing because we... to hold it. But the lights are failing because of, uh, workmanship, they're off of warranty, I assume.
Workmanship, we got, I mean, we've got a good reason to hold some of that back. If it's, if they were just specked wrong or, you know, it was lousy specs, that's not, that's not Mosaic's problem. Not that I have any sympathy for Mosaic at all.
Understand. Understand. We think Todd, pay them?
I think we pay them. How long will this go on? In other words, I mean, I think we can find faulty work for the next five years. You know, every three months, we're, hey, this isn't working now. This isn't working. Well, they installed it wrong. You know, I think we pay them and learn our lesson that we never use them again.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Motion in second to pay Mosaic final payment. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. We need some signature.
I don't know if that needs a signature.
May not. I think you're right. Yep.
Yes, gathering.
Okay, well, we're doing okay. Let's take a break.
Should we stop the recording now?
Yep.
Stop.
How to do it?
Did it stop? Yes, okay.
Awesome. Good job.
All right. Then we got these other ones here, which is... I know. On your list. Down here.
Bill, did you do it last, or did you do it last year? Okay, so say I did it and I was gone.